Good evening, Vacaville. Welcome to the January 23, 2024 regularly scheduled City Council meeting in Vacaville. With that, I can have a roll call.
Council agency authority member Stockton.
Here.
Silva.
Here.
Chapman.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Here.
Wiley.
Here.
Vice Chair Ritchie.
Here.
Mayor Chair Carley.
Here. If you're able, please stand with me for a moment of silence. Councilmember Stockton, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
All right. Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And seeing no presentations tonight, we're on to the consent calendar. We have two items, any member of the council or the public wishing to pull an item for Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Business from the floor, this is a time for a member of the public to address the council in our jurisdiction, although not for only an item that's not on tonight's agenda. I'm going to open it up for business from the floor. Good evening.
First of all, I just wanted to come and extend my thank you to the entire City Council for listening to all of our comments and concerns over the past year about the Menard Battery Storage Project. I really appreciate it, and I'm sincerely grateful for your decision to turn down that project. Not only have you kept my family safe, but you've kept Vacaville safe, and I am sincerely grateful. The project could have affected our city in a negative way, and I also want to thank our community for getting involved. There were a lot of people that were involved and spent time on the cause, and I can't name them all, but I wanted to give a special shout out to Leo Escarsica. He was at all the community events, gathering signatures for the petition signings, and he put a lot of hours in there, and so I just wanted to recognize him publicly for that. And he didn't even live very close to the facility, so I just wanted to give him that thanks. I also wanted to let you know that this morning, the County Board of Supervisors meeting, they voted unanimously to put a moratorium on battery storage projects in the county. So that was effective today. During the project, the Menard Energy Project, we learned a lot about battery storage, and I think the project was eye-opening. I, as a member of the public, I learned a lot, and I know the city learned a lot from that as well. I do believe that battery storage in Vacaville, that discussion's not over, and so this will be an ongoing thing that will be brought up time and time again, and as we've seen, we've already had several projects being proposed for the city. And so I think because of our substation, being the large substation, that's going to be an ongoing problem that needs to be addressed. Additionally, I wanted to request, if possible, that some members of my group be updated about the consultant that was hired, the LNT consultant for distributed energy projects, and if possible, we could be like the public, give the public input on those projects, or just have an outside opinion, if that's at all possible. But we just want to stay involved because we put so much effort into learning about these systems, and we want to make, you know, contribute our input as well as with the city to come out with the best projects possible. So that's it. And thank you again sincerely from the bottom of my heart.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Something I'd like to point out is, isn't it amazing how a citizen in the community can bring people of all stripes together on a common issue and let their voices be heard? I know this sounds kind of silly from me, but I hope that the council celebrates the idea that somebody like Sarah, who did all that work and brought people together for the good of the community, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I have here last Friday's copy of the Vacaville Reporter, I hope that all of you read it. They've got an interesting article in here, very long, about community leaders react to the ballot initiative that was put out by our dear friends at Flannery Associates, otherwise known as California Forever. Have any of you ever heard Mr. Schmidtnik speak of Solano County or the residents therein? It's like he's talking about something he wiped off his boot heel. That's the person who's the CEO of California Forever. And if you read this article, which I hope you all read, you'll notice that House Member Garabindi, who represents most of Solano County but not our portion, he's very, very frank and critical about what he believes California Forever, their city, is going to do to Solano County. I don't hear, I hear comments in here about what the mayor of Fairfield thinks is going to happen, and it's not good. I see comments from the vice mayor of Sassoon, she's not for it. From members of the Vacaville City Council, we hear nothing. The only thing that is mentioned in this article is a Mr. Portney, who's a member of our planning commission, I read here, is that he is also a member of the California Forever Advisory Committee. This seems kind of strange to me, I think that he's serving two masters, and I get the idea which one pays better. Oh yeah, that is an appointed position that he's in. I wonder if perhaps the City Council should not consider that appointment, because I don't think that that gentleman is representing Vacaville's needs. I think he's representing their desires, because if you read into their plans for their thousand-plus-acre solar farm and all that, that is going to drive Travis Air Force Base out of here. And if Travis goes, we're right down the toilet. We will be nothing more than the fiefdom for the multi-billionaires that are creating that city. We will pay for everything. Read Congressman Garabindi's comments, I think they're very enlightening.
Yeah, thank you. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close, business from the floor, and I do not see any public hearings, so we will move on to item nine, yeah, 9A. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This first item before you is a resolution for a Second Amendment to the disposition, development, and loan agreement that the city has with Habitat for Humanity. Tamara Colton from your Housing and Community Services Department is here with the presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, and other council members. Tonight, I'm here to present the item of amending the disposition, development, and loan agreement, or DDLA, between the city of Vacaville and Solano Habitat for Humanity, and approving an expenditure adjustment to the 2023-2024 fiscal year operating budget. So back in November of 2022, City Council authorized the application and adoption of the permanent local housing allocation plan, or PLHA, for the city, as well as application of the PLHA funding program. This funding is to provide financial assistance to local governments for eligible housing-related projects, and the city's HCD, or Housing and Community Development, approved PLH plan allows the city to use its PLHA funds for predevelopment, development, acquisition, rehab, and preservation of affordable rental and homeownership units. That includes ADUs or accessory dwelling units that meet the need of a growing workforce, earning up to 120% of the area median income. This HCD sent the standard agreement, and that was executed in June of 2023. That includes the 2019, 2020, and 2021 allocations, and the '22 and '23 allocations are still projections from HCD, so those have not been finalized, and the department will receive an amended standard agreement once those amounts are finalized from HCD. PLH requirements require that this dispersment of funds within 58 months of the budget appropriation year, and that the city request those funds to meet that 58-month deadline. So for the 2019 allocation, that means that the funding amount of $240,500 must be dispersed to the city by April 30th of 2024. Taking into consideration the PLHA guidelines and the city's PLH plan, staff has identified the Solano-Napa Habitat for Humanity Affordable Homeownership Project for recommendation to receive the 2019 allocation. On top of the activities that are identified in the city's PLHA plan, the city's plan allocates 70% of its overall funds towards rental rehab projects and reserves the remaining 30% of the funds towards homeownership projects. There are currently no rental rehab projects that are in a position to start spending the funds, and being the only homeownership project that staff is aware of that needs funding. The Habitat Project is eligible under the reserved homeownership funds for the PLHA program. In addition, the Habitat Project is at a stage where it has received entitlements, it's pending its NEPA environmental assessment, and is in a position to spend the funds on predevelopment costs for the project. Draft loan, the draft Second Amendment to the DDLA, as well as an amended and restated promissory note, were required to be submitted to the state by January 15th. So those were drafted and submitted for review, and staff's still reading any comments back from HCD on those documents. And if approved tonight, any comments or modifications required by HCD to approve those documents will be incorporated before they are executed by the city manager or his designee. So tonight, action for your consideration is approving the Second Amendment to the DDLA with Solano-Napa Habitat for Humanity to include the additional $240,500 in PLHA funding and to amend an expenditure adjustment to the 2023-2024 fiscal operating budget in the amount of that $240,500. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, there is a question that I can see. Councilmember Silva.
Thanks for the presentation and request, really excited about this particular project. When, from your perspective, do we have an estimate of when it'll break ground and anticipated completion?
That is a great question. I do not have that information prepared with me, but I believe there is a representative from Solano Habitat, Solano-Napa Habitat that could answer that question.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Carley. Councilmembers, thanks very much for this opportunity. So Councilmember Silva, thanks for the question. We anticipate that by the second quarter of calendar 2025, we should be able to break ground on installing the infrastructure. It's the 10-unit development will require a street, so installation of the street and the underground utilities could begin as early as Q2 2025.
And then just, thanks for coming out, and one follow-up question, one thing that we see is that, you know, from the time, you know, when there's funding available, estimates are made, you know, the longer it takes, obviously with inflation and other issues, that goes up. What's typically in your experience, would you anticipate with possible increased costs with this project?
Yeah, difficult, by the way, I don't think I introduced myself, my name's Andrew Coleen, I'm the Executive Director for Solano-Napa Habitat for Humanity. In terms of cost inflations, really tough to project, we do right now have a projection for a total project cost of 4.8 million. That's all link, including the installation of infrastructure. If we break ground on the installation of the infrastructure, Q2 next year, in accordance with the terms of the DDLA, we're obliged to complete construction once we go vertical within three years. So if we complete infrastructure by the end of 2025, then the vertical construction should be done by the end of 2028. Our 4.8 million projection anticipates sort of two or three years out. I don't have a crystal ball, but that is our best projection at this point.
So, and that was my last question, just with, when those figures are come up, came up with, is it built in, do you guys built in or anticipated increased costs?
Yeah, when we did come up with those numbers, it was November of 2022, we were already aware of all the terms of the DDLA, which pretty much put the project in about a five-year timeframe, so those figures were rolled in. I can say, just as a word of caution, when the pandemic hit, there was an escalation in costs that we simply couldn't have anticipated. So we have a project that's moving forward in Fairfield right now, but there was cost escalations that we didn't accurately predict, but generally speaking, five years out is generally pretty accurate, and it does anticipate regular inflation.
Thank you, Andrew.
You got it, thanks very much.
Vice Mayor Ritchie.
Sir, sir, to be brief, everything you said, while I was reviewing information, my concern was time, when to break ground, the cost of construction, at 4.8 million, what is estimated as of now, cost per unit? Because, you know, 80% AMI, and then the, I think the AMI for like a four-person dwell is like 83,000 and change, so 80% of that's like 6,000, 7,000. So like, I just want to make sure that we have a rational number, because if we're going to, if we're going to expect someone that makes 80% AMI to afford that house, they can only qualify as 6,000, 7,000 for four people, divided by 12, it's really tight. So I want to make sure that, let's not like be surprised if it doesn't work out, like let's plan ahead to make sure the people that put a sweat equity into this house can have the opportunity to own the house they live in.
So Councilmember Ritchie, it's a really good question, and I'm inferring that you may come from the for-profit real estate world, because...
Oh yeah.
Yeah. So what happens, thanks to the Habitat model, is irrespective of what our costs are, the Habitat model demands that we originate a first mortgage that's affordable to the low-income family. So those monthly payments of principal on the loan, homeowner's insurance, and property taxes will be 30% of their income, no matter what the cost to develop the homes were. Then we originate, we'll sell the house for the fair market value, we'll have it appraised, we'll sell it to them for the fair market value, and we'll originate a soft second that'll encumber the title. It's not, no periodic payments are due, it becomes due on sale. So they'll make affordable payments no matter what. We carry that soft second, and it'll continue to encumber the title. The disposition, development, and loan agreement require that for 45 years, we keep it in the affordable space, that's our mandate. If the house sells, we reserve the first right to purchase through a deed restriction, we'll buy it back. The terms of that repurchase are defined, and then we'll have to sell it to another low-income family with affordable financing again. So families not being able to afford the homes would never be an obstruction to this project moving forward of the home selling. We will sell them for, with affordable financing.
So you would be able to keep on increasing that second to make sure that the first trust deed is affordable by that homeowner?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the model.
Okay, that's perfect.
Got it, thanks for the question.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. It's a question for staff.
Okay, thank you, thank you for sharing, appreciate it.
I'm looking between the two, okay, it's not regarding the 240,000 that's being allocated tonight, however, I'm looking at the future years that are listed here, 2020, 21, 22, 23. For each of those years, we have 58 months, and what in which to get them, to identify where we wish to have those funds designated or used. And so with that, have we begun looking at future projects? Or where are we with the remaining funds?
That's a good question. So yes, with each of the years allocated, we have 58 months from that year that the funds were budgeted in order to request for dispersment of the funds. So the 2020 funds, we will need to request dispersment no later. Well, the funds will need to be dispersed by April 30th of 2025, and then so on, and.
2024.
For the 2020 fund?
For the 2020, 21, 23, 24, plus two months. So that's really just four years and two months. It's 58 months.
So it's 58 months. Let me go back to this slide. So I can get the correct wording. So it's 58 months of the budget appropriation. So that's within the state appropriating the funding for that budget. So it's 58 months from that date. So it ends up calculating out to April 30th. So for the 2019 funds, that's April 30th of 2024. For the 2020 funds, it'll be April 30th of 2025. And that is 58 months from the time that the state appropriated that budget. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, yes. All right. And we've already began earmarking or looking at future projects?
Yes, so from the time that we applied for and received the standard agreement for the funds, staff has been considering projects that might be appropriate for this funding. While we were aware of the April 30th date, not until the end, towards the end of December, where did HCD notify staff of some pending dates before that that we needed to meet prior to that April 30th date? So with having to submit draft loan documents to the state by January 15th and having to actually request the funds by March 1st is when staff was made aware of those additional dates to get us to the dispersment by April 30th. So we will make sure, staff will make sure that we incorporate that timeline into the next year's funding when considering projects that might be eligible or suitable for additional year's funding.
Okay, looked like we were very close to losing those funds.
And it's definitely staff's intent to make sure that we build in enough cushion or enough time for council to make considerations like these. But again, just for this first round of funding, not until very recently, where staff made aware of some additional timelines that needed to be met in order to get us to that April 30th dispersment date. Yeah.
Thank you. Open up to the public for any comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion? A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you, sir, for the work that you're doing in our community. With that, we'll move on to item B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This item is following up on a request from the council fairly recently. They have a presentation from the police department in regards to their youth services department and the work that they provide to our community. So I think Paula Laddoo and her team are coming up to give you that presentation and all the amazing work that they do for our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paula.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I did bring my team, as promised, last time I was here, and they're going to assist in the presentation. Just to introduce them briefly, first we have Danielle Sanchez. She's going to start out with an overview of the Youth Services Section. She's a licensed clinician, so she'll be talking about our clinical component of the programming. And that will be followed up with Andrea Gonzalez, who is a program coordinator with our youth development programming, and she's going to update you on those programs specifically. We did receive some additional funding, and so we'd really like to talk about that with you and give you that update.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Danielle Sanchez. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist and a board-certified behavior analyst. I am one of two mental health coordinators with the Youth Services Section. Right. So our Youth Services Section, or YSS, have counseling spaces in each one of these schools, as you see here. It does say Country High, but that is Sway, our Shereen Wilkerson. And our PAL office is located on that campus as well. Our mission statement, as members of the Vacaville Police Department's Youth Services Section, we challenge the barriers of traditional policing. We accomplish this by engaging our youth and their families with growth opportunities through enforcement, intervention, and education. The vision of Youth Services is to promote self-esteem and accountability, ensuring a successful future for our youth. Our goal is to help youth and their families find healthy solutions to the problems they're facing. These problems may result or have resulted in delinquent behavior. We place emphasis on prevention and redirection of delinquency. We also believe that the family unit is the single most important resource in our determination to help our youth. Our YSS division is comprised of one sergeant, four school resource officers, or SROs, two licensed mental health coordinators, a family support worker, an office assistant, a youth development manager, senior youth program coordinator, two youth program coordinators, three PAL intern positions, two are currently vacant, and 12 mental health counseling interns. So as you can see here, our clinical diversion enforcement and youth development services, which I'm soon to describe, tightly overlap. So this diagram accurately reflects the interconnectedness that we pride ourselves on as our families feel buoyed by the multi-layered support. Our school resource officers perform the typical enforcement duties of any patrol officer, but with a twist, it is solely youth-focused. From proactively addressing youth-related criminal activity on campus and within the community to supporting youth in various capacities, counselor, friend, even father figure, an SRO does it all. They also provide public information and education on youth-related issues. The clinical side of YSS entails our counseling services. We recruit, screen, and train college-level interns to provide individual and family counseling, crisis management, and substance abuse interventions. Our interns and mental health coordinators also serve as liaisons between community agencies and schools. We also offer TINA and IRVINE, which is a low-level substance abuse group for teens. We have our intern counseling program alongside VUSD. Our interns are the ones providing the services in the previous slide alongside with anger management. We offer Parent Project, which is our parent support group. We also offer gang intervention and prevention education and diversion, which I will review shortly. All right, so let's talk about numbers. So to preface, our interns typically see about four to five students within their day for about six weeks, six to eight weeks, excuse me. And some interns are here multiple days a week, but for the most part, they're only here once a week. So over the course of the year, we performed 1,284 counseling services at 18 different schools here in the district to 243 unduplicated students. Predominantly, we performed individual counseling sessions, totaling 1,161, with 101 family sessions and 22 group sessions. As you can see, the far-right chart reflects the amount of students we service at each of our schools. It's no surprise that our high school and middle schools have the highest numbers, as well as Calisum and Browns Valley had some, I'm sorry, Cooper and Browns Valley had some high numbers as well. But we did have multiple interns at those sites, and they were able to see more students. So this slide here reflects the concerns our students are experiencing. So when our interns input their notes, they do have to select the appropriate therapeutic concern that was brought up in the session. And often, there were multiple concerns that were discussed again in the session. So the pie chart reflects a more visual representation of the numbers with anxiety and family conflict as our biggest concerns. All right, our diversion program. Our diversion program reflects our goal of redirecting delinquent behavior. So clients who refer to this program are typically first offenders. The, excuse me, they are required to do any of the following: community service, writing a letter of apology, an essay about how their activity affected them and their families. Last year, there were 111 citations. Actually, there were arrests, but they do call them citations, just to be a little bit nicer, with 68 being sent to our diversion worker. And I must state that she is only one person handling 68 cases in the entirety of the year, with only 43 of those cases being sent to probation. So again, the goal is to redirect such clients away from probation, redirect and prevent. So 53 of those cases being sent to diversion were closed successfully, which means that the clients completed, I'm sorry, they had met the agreed-upon expectations, with a mere 9% being sent to probation or not completing their cases successfully. The other 7% were clients who were cited or arrested again while on diversion, but out of the goodness of Lucia's heart and her wise judgment, she decided to keep them on her caseload. Right, now pass it over to Andrea.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Gonzalez. I am the Senior Program Coordinator for our police department for our youth development programs. So starting off for background, I just wanted to mention that currently, our youth development staff shares an office at the Shereen Wilkerson Academy of Excellence, otherwise known as SWAY. So they've been gracious enough to allow us to share their office space. So that's currently where we're located. So at SWAY, we do conduct our program development, coordination, and logistics while the majority of the actual activities are held at Vacaville Middle School. So as noted on the screen, I just wanted to briefly touch on our current programs. So our PAL programs are open year-round for students who live in Vacaville or are enrolled in Vacaville Unified School District schools and are between the ages of seven and 18. The current goal of our PAL chapter is to foster positive relationships between our officers and the youth through enriching activities. In addition to this, what is special about our PAL chapter is that we heavily focus on leadership skills, service learning, and building the confidence and potential that we know that they all have. Next up, we have Summerant City Hall. Sorry, actually, I meant to say, thank you. So for Summerant City Hall, that is our four-week program that we partner with the Vacaville Unified School District, the Travis Unified School District, and the City of Vacaville. So the mission of Summerant City Hall is to simulate the experience of what it would be like to apply for employment. So youth do go through the motions of applying, interviewing, and attending a mandatory orientation. So once they know that they've been accepted, they do attend an orientation, and just kind of we lay down the rules and expectations of what their next four weeks will look like. So during the four weeks, the program exposes youth to civic engagement, local government, resource identification, career interest, and an internship component with various City of Vacaville departments. Upon completion to the program, the kids do receive a $500 stipend, a Chromebook, and five units of elective credit. As far as Junior Giants goes, Junior Giants is brought to us by the San Francisco Giants Community Fund and allows us to provide eight weeks of free non-competitive baseball and softball programs, both co-ed, for kids ages seven to 13. And I wanted to add, for that program, it's been a very interesting to see how much we have grown from post-COVID. I believe 2021 was the year that we started off with about 50 kids. Last year, we had around 75, and our goal for this year is to be able to provide services to at least 120 students for Junior Giants. So we've had a tremendous growth with that, and we're really excited. All of our families always tell us how much they love it and are excited to, you know, do it again for the next summer. So as far as data goes, just wanted to show you guys a little bit of demographic background. But in the year 2023, we did serve 269 unduplicated youth through our youth development programs. And our youth development staff hosted 137 events, which included PAL teens, PAL kids, special events, field trips, conferences, Summerant City Hall, and Junior Giants. So if you wanted to take a look, there's some of the data. Give you guys a second to look through that, and we will move forward to what we want to bring back. Awesome. Okay. So these are the programs that we are looking to bringing back. So we're currently phasing in the programs that were inactive due to staffing. So thanks to all of you and the City of Vacaville, we now have a full team of one youth development manager, one senior program coordinator, two program coordinator ones, and two interns. So with that being said, the youth development team is in the planning and implementation phase of restoring the following programs. So we'll start off with Vacaville Aware. So our Aware Coalition is a coalition that was created to bring awareness to the dangers of youth alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. So the coalition offers teens an opportunity to be engaged in leadership activities and community change. So we're actually currently working with the Vacaville Unified School District admin to learn their needs of what's going on in the schools related to the use of drugs and alcohol. And our plan is to be able to bring some sort of curriculum to the students when it comes to the use of drugs and alcohol. We do have TINA and TRVINE and other things, but they're kind of looking into the students who are unfortunately kind of into some other drugs that are a little more intense. So we're currently looking into doing something a little more, again, intense. So that's in the works right now. And as far as the Vacaville Reach Youth Coalition, that one actually stemmed from the Vacaville Youth Roundtable. So the goal of Reach is to promote the physical, emotional, and social well-being of all of the youth, to advocate for policies and system changes for all of them to succeed. So we strive to increase youth safety in the community and connect youth to our existing resources. So activities that Reach will bring back are the Youth Summit that we've hosted in the past. And then we're also looking forward to bringing The Night Out on Rocky Hill Trail, in case you guys haven't attended that in the past. We set up a whole lot of community booths of different organizations, companies, and we kind of just host the night for them to be able to explore all the resources that they have. So we're really looking forward to moving forward to all of that. But that's it for now. So thank you so much for your attention. And I actually did wanted to ask you guys if it was okay. We do have a student who wants to talk really quick, so if it's okay with you all.
Absolutely. I see them in the row eagerly wanting to come forward. And so to come up to the microphone and, good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Angelique Camarena. I'm 16 years old. I attend Vacaville High School. And today, I want to share my experience with PAL. I started in PAL teens, the start of freshman year. I got referred to the PAL program for diversion hours, community service hours. After I completed my hours, I stayed in the program because I truly found my why. I truly enjoyed being part of the program because I met many, I got many opportunities that benefited me in many ways. And that I'm very grateful, and I don't take for granted. PAL has helped me become a leader in my community and for those around me. Through PAL, I've been able to share my story. And with that, I've been able to inspire kids my age and future generations. Due to PAL, I've been able to attend California/National PAL leadership conferences and trips, one of those being Washington DC, that we attended this past June. During this trip, I had the opportunity to meet one of the California US Representatives, Mike Thompson. Furthermore, I have accomplished many things, Furthermore, I have accomplished many things, one of those being Vacaville Police Cadet. Two years ago, I recently got promoted to Field Train Officer where I train and oversee a group of cadets. PAL is truly a program with big opportunities for us youth. Thank you for your time and for your support.
Thank you so much. I thank you for the presentation and your story and sharing your why. Really is a wonderful thing we have here. I've had the privilege to see it all my years and many people don't realize that our community is blessed to have a program that has been a model to other cities around the country and been nationally recognized for the work that you do. And the stories that get told, there's so many more like it, but you just never know what is in front of your life. And the concept of having a program for youth in diversion, we know that there's probation and there's diversion probation, but the goal really is, before it could ever even been understood in modern understanding of restorative justice, truly was the restoration. And in all my years to know that that program's existed here is it's something to say that we are blessed to have all of you. I will ask a question. How many higher education colleges and universities are under contract with the City of Vacaville to provide the hours of certification? We are a training city. That's what we do. That's a unique thing that people don't understand. I used to sign those contracts. And so, do you know? That mic's on too.
Oh, it is on. Okay, I'm sorry. So it fluctuates depending on the year. We have their three-year contracts and so they come and go. Right now, we have eight different universities. But you know, and then for a while it might expire and then we don't get a student again for a few more years and then we just re-up it. But it fluctuates, but it's quite a few. But fun fact, Ms. Danielle here actually interned with us. What year? Like? Yeah, so a decade ago, more than a decade ago, and here she is now.
It's really exciting because some of the programs, it could be Summer at City Hall. You inspire the youth to somehow go into local government or to activate the youth to be part of the coalitions that actually forms some of the policies and go talk to elected officials. We've seen it. It is such a neat thing to see in our community. I'm so thankful that it continues to this day in providing future employees, not only in other cities who model after us, but even our own. So it's nice to see that the product of the program actually benefits our community as well. So I'm going to open it up. Well, Councilmember Silvam.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. I've been looking forward to this presentation for a while just to better understand where the data is at, where their needs are at. You know, a lot of times when you see numbers, it doesn't tell a story, you know, when you say 1,000 visits, 100 visits. So with respect to mental health, I've heard different things through the years. You know, when, so you provided a slide, I think it was Slide 11, breakdown of mental health issues. Maybe if possible, reference that. Can you elaborate more about the time commitment it would take for individual? Like, how much time is dedicated to each individual child that might fit behind some of these topics? Particularly around like suicide, substance abuse and so forth?
So our interns usually, they typically spend about 50 to 60 minutes with our students each day that they meet with them. And so it, again, our services are meant to be short-term. So again, 68 weeks. If we do find a student that's constantly reflected in these numbers of they have a lot more suicidal assessments that we're providing or they're engaging in a lot more self-harm, then we do have to refer onwards because again, like, you know, Mayor Carly said that this is a training grounds for interns. And so that they are getting that experience, but because most of them are quite green, if there is a student who again is displaying a lot more of severe mental health, then we do have to refer them onwards. Does that quite answer your question?
So where's onwards?
So we can infer them to their insurance to get services that way. We do have a couple of other agencies that I've kind of started to see within the community. I know Youth Rising has some support systems for students who might need more intense mental health services. We also partner with Care Solus, which is a third-party service that the Vacaville School District uses to assist families in getting connected with someone within their insurance network.
Yeah, so.
Most of the families honestly either have Kaiser Private Insurance or County Mental Health. Most of the students that wouldn't have private insurance are covered by County Mental Health. And so if it is a severe mental health issue, that would be the referral. And if parents need support in accessing those resources and they're not sure how to, we can assist with that also when we do, because we also have the Family Resource Center. So we'll cross-refer and then for the, you know, if our students' families need intensive case management, then that gets cross-referred to the Family Resource Center and our family support workers will spend up to a year working with the family, making sure that all of the needs of the family are met. And if, you know, obtaining health insurance is part of that, you know, we can help them with the exchange, getting access to health insurance that's available to everybody or accessing county mental health.
And so like in my personal experience with access, so you have access, sorry, you have access to healthcare. So insurance allows for that. But then being able to actually truly access it, so what I just referred to is the quality of care that people are actually truly able to access. I think for adults-wise, I hear a lot of concerns about that from, and it's not just any one health provider, it's across the board.
Yeah, there's currently a shortage of mental health providers nationwide, so that is definitely an issue.
So what are our, what do our kids lay in that?
Well, that's why it's so wonderful that we have this program and we have the interns that can provide these services. So they're getting at least the bare minimum, which is that. And we have, I mean, it is case by case in terms of referring them on if they don't have resources. We would never, we would never just not provide services when there wasn't a warm handoff to, you know, something that was accessible. We wouldn't just stop seeing them because of this. So, you know, with the support of the clinical supervisors, the interns would continue to work with them. We meet with them weekly for individual and group supervision and clinical supervisors are constantly available. So they have a lot of supervision. And so if that needs to happen so that they're not left with no services whatsoever, that happens and.
And then do, does your staff follow up on them to make sure they don't like quote-unquote fall through the cracks?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And we work closely with the mental health clinicians that are school district employees. And the school mental health clinicians typically see the more seriously mentally ill students and they're licensed. And so they have those on the caseload. But our staff meets regularly with the lead staff over there and they work together. It's a good partnership.
Thank you. I got a few more, several more questions. So within the programs, just, you know, I don't expect you guys to know that. I'm just kind of curious to see how many, the demographics, how many students or how many folks are actually involved in those different programs. So if some point, you know, someone could forward me that or us that information, I'm curious to know that.
I'm sorry, can you clarify specifically who's involved, who's, demographics of who's receiving mental health counseling?
No, I'm sorry. So moving on to like the programs, there was like, I forget what slide it was, but there was.
Oh, your Youth Development Program.
Yeah, this one. So like, I'm curious to see how many actually attend each one of those different programs.
Oh, okay. We can get that for you.
What's the attendance?
Okay, we can.
And then what, just generally asking, what value would, what value does do these programs? Why is it more valuable to have this under the city purview, particularly under Police Department purview over possibly having, you know, referring to a third party? What, what do you?
I think personally, I think being under the Police Department provides a lot of avenues specifically for PAL just because we do have like that closer, I guess, attachment to the officers or a little more easily accessible. We're able to spend more time with them and kind of build a rapport to see like what it is that they enjoy or kind of just gauge their interest to be able to provide programming that kind of works for everybody. And also just getting to know those who maybe have more time, you know. Unfortunately, I know everybody has families, kids and they're busy. So I just think that being able to be under the Police Department umbrella works a lot better with the aspect of being able to engage our officers. But as far as that goes, we've actually been able to be a part of like national and California conferences that have to do with the same thing. And those that are under a different umbrella of like non-city sanctioned departments struggle a lot more because it's harder for them to access resources that we have that they probably don't. So I think being under city helps a lot because there's just so many things that we can share between each other. A perfect example is being able to share, for example, like Parks and Rec, like the parks or community, the community, like E-Lattice, you know, McBride. So yeah, so using the centers, being, having that close relationship with the districts is also great because that's where we're hosting our programs. And just having, trying to build that rapport with others is like the perfect thing. Because I'll give you an example, like last week Vacaville Unified School District Admin invited me to a very personal meeting about a certain family who unfortunately their kids were not showing up to school for like weeks on end. And they kind of reeled me in to be able to kind of talk to that family. And we went and talked to that family, got them in PAL and the next day like they showed up to school and they hadn't been to school in like weeks. And then that day I took their kids to program. So I think it's just being able to be so close to everybody else is what's super helpful. So I hope that answers your question.
I wasn't, I realized I probably can be interpreted like I don't want it under.
No, no, no. I didn't think like that. So yeah.
No, I just wanted to add on that, another example of that of where we all work together and we're all part of the Police Department, but different units within the department is that we have a clinical, clinical mental health intern that's assigned just to PAL and works with those families and those students for mental health also. So I don't, you know, I doubt other PAL programs that are run just through the nonprofit would have that type of access with case management and then also the Family Resource Center. You know, we are constantly meeting and talking with each other, so the family gets full wraparound services. They might, we might, you know, they know because they're involved in PAL and then we can get help with, you know, if they need rental assistance or any other type of basic needs assistance.
So along those lines, what do you see the biggest needs of youth and/or their families?
Housing.
And what's specific about housing?
Affordable housing. Yeah. People are just priced out of, I mean, even middle-class families are getting priced out. Two-bedroom apartments are twice as much as the mortgage. Yeah, three grand a month. It's, everybody's struggling with that.
And so kind of along this, both lines, maybe if one of the youth feel comfortable, which I know they do because of pretty strong individuals I've observed through the years. I haven't seen any program be able to tap in and build trust with particularly so many teens. And that, and not in sports. And, you know, just told us not to get too far off track, but like, you know, there's a story that came out about how 70% of youth drop out of youth sports by the age of 13. And those who drop out have higher incidences of depression, suicide, or delinquency and whatnot. And so finding a place of sense of belonging and purpose, I think, is really key. So obviously, you know, and I've seen, you know, anytime there's a community event, y'all show up, right? Y'all show up, y'all put out work and one of y'all in particularly know how to keep everybody in line. I'm extremely impressed. I'm like, wow, you're a teenager? Like, you should be running this city. So I'm curious to know if anybody feels comfortable sharing, like what is it, what is it? What's the it that allows so many teens, so many youth to feel comfortable in this environment? Yeah, I'll leave it at that. And you can speak for yourself or maybe what you feel for others.
My name is Luis and could you repeat that for me one more time?
Why do you think so many youth are interested in, so I know you guys are part of PAL. Why are men so interested in PAL?
So PAL is very like friendly. Like when I first joined, I was like, I got scared because my parents like made me do it. But I met, Andrea was one of the first ones I met and she was like really, really nice. And she like made me go out there, engage in the activities, go to the community events. And I slowly, but surely, I really enjoyed it and made it, made it fun.
Thank you.
Angelique, I think PAL has really like helped me out with just being able to be more confident myself or, you know, going to the right direction. You know, all the officers come out and go on trips with us and it just, with them, it's like a whole different like side, you know. They're in their uniform. We see them a different way, but when we go on trips with them, it's like, you know, they're human and all. We definitely build relationships with them and we're able to talk with them if we have a problem or whatever it is. But PAL has really helped me just be able to focus on school, focus on like my future, what I want to do. You know, it's just a really great program that, you know, later kids are able to see and experience, you know, meeting new people, you know, public speaking, just being confident in general. But it's honestly, you know, all the coordinators are really hardworking and, you know, with their time and effort into the PAL program has really, you know, made us like the program even more just because, you know, everyone around us is, you know, a big mentor to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, both of you. It means a lot and it's very personal and it's very helpful too.
So two more, two more pieces and I'm done, done.
Are you sure?
I'm very sure. Maybe sure. So.
There's a lot of lights on.
So just last thing or last two items. What is, do you guys have a waitlist or are you able to meet the needs? So I hear that you have a shared office space with another facility. And then from my recollection, there's still a dedicated portal, portable, excuse me, at Vacopena that you all mentioned. Is that space adequate?
So unfortunately, it is not. We are growing at a rapid rate. So there's a lot of pros and cons to that. Obviously, it shows that it's working, right? That even amongst our kids, the kids are talking about it. Like we even have a kid who's officially become a recruiter. Like every other day, he's like, I have another kid, I have another kid. And I'm just like, ah, like. So it's a little overwhelming in a good way because there's so many people, but we have had to cap our meetings. So for example, tomorrow we have a PAL Teens meeting and we have 40 kids who signed up and I cannot allow anymore because we don't have the space. So we have had to cap pretty much each meeting and it also includes our PAL Kids, which is the ages for seven to 11 and then PAL Teens is 12 to 18. And for each meeting, we do have to cap them out. For the PAL Kids, we do use a smaller room, so we usually have the cap at 34 when usually we have about, we now have about 80 parents on a group chat who are interested in joining, but unfortunately, we cannot have them all come out once because we don't have the space.
So kind of, and so I get all that, you know, I've seen it. So what I'd like for council to consider, and this will be my last comment here, during our next study session, I'd like to see if we can get some council support to have a discussion as a council along with staff to see if we should pursue additional options to find dedicated space for the services they provide. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley. Thank you for the information and I have a few questions. If you will go back to Slide 10, I just, on the slide that says individual counseling, like 1,161, is that, like, do you count each one for one person or those like repeat for a lot of people? And you said they were like six to eight weeks or whatever. So like, how many students are people does that mean?
So it's 243 students.
Okay.
That's unduplicated. And then they, the 243 students had a total of 1,284.
Okay, thank you. I should have figured that out myself, but thank you for clarifying that. And then I was going to ask about tobacco use, but then you said in that one slide, that's a program you're going to reinstitute, so it's currently not going on, but you are going to begin it again, but then focus on stronger things than just alcohol and drugs.
Correct.
But it often starts with alcohol and tobacco.
The group that we currently do, the clinical group that we do, we do also talk about vaping and tobacco.
Okay. Okay. Because I know that's a big thing. The other thing you kept seeing, VUSD, VUSD, is there a cost sharing? Do they, besides, so what is the cost sharing with Vacaville High?
The number? You want the actual?
I mean, like, do they do 40%, 20%, 10%?
No, it's just an amount.
Okay. And, and so like students are people who are not a student at VUSD, they're not eligible. So are, do we have people that were not serving because they're not VUSD students?
Travis Unified School District students would not be. And there are some residents of Vacaville that are Travis.
And they're not being served?
Correct.
Or if you're homeschooling or if you're, you know, so.
Well, if they're homeschooled through our district, they can still get services. They just have to come to one of our offices.
Okay.
Yeah. But we don't have a contract. We have a contract with Vacaville Unified.
With Vacaville?
Correct.
Okay. And then just, you know, I really appreciate all the people that were here speaking and their involvement. speaking and their involvement, and they helped in our last, Spruce Up last year at District Six, and they were excellent help and wonderful attitude and working, so that was great. Do most of the people that are PAL, PAL teen kids go on to be PAL teens, or do you lose some in between?
Most of them will stay. So for example, uh, Luis started off as a PAL kid, he is now PAL teen, and he's remained with us. Um, very little will fall off. Um, usually the ones who do fall off are the ones who are heavily involved in other sports that take up a lot more of their time, uh, but for the most part, we do see, um, them continuing, continuously stay through their high school graduation.
And because you work with families, do you generally have like siblings?
Yes, so he's a perfect example. Luis has two younger siblings, and since one of them, I think from before he was eligible at seven years old, he was waiting and waiting to join, and then now he's in and he's soon going to be transferring to PAL teen, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Chau.
Thank you. Um, for the summer at, at City Hall and the junior, um.
Thanks.
Giants, yes. The application process, when does it begin? When does it open and when does it end? How are, uh, how do you market? Is it strictly through the school district?
Um, so for summer at City Hall, I'm trying to, off the top of my head, so I apologize if it's, um, not correct right now, and we can definitely get that to you. But I believe, um, we open at about two and a half months before, at least two months before. Um, so we do give them enough time, I think this last year we probably did a little bit less, but at least a month, um, they will have to apply. Um, and what we do is we post all over all social media, and then we disseminate the information to the Vacaville Unified School District schools, um, and really any other, um, you know, agent that we may have from other organizations. And for that one, we do, um, accept Travis Unified School District students because we incorporated the Travis Unified School District Admins, so we do, um, offer a couple of positions for their students as well. And then as far as, I'm so sorry, if you could repeat your question about junior giants.
Junior Giants and the summer at City Hall, those were the two, um, the application process timeframe for them. And then, um, employment. I didn't hear anything about aiding or assisting the youth, uh, with employment. Uh, there are some youth I've, I speak, talk to, communicate with in the community, and that's something that they want, they, and it's difficult for them to obtain jobs.
Yeah.
Um, do we have a link through PAL and the business community?
Not currently, unfortunately, but that's definitely something that could fall under the umbrella of reach because that's the one that we're trying to give them access to resources and being able to help them, um, in that process. I can tell you that at summer at City Hall, they do go over like an extensive amount of time, like to being able to do resumes and how to apply, where to look, um, but we know that's not enough, so that could definitely be something that we can take note of, um, for our reach programs. And then I'm sorry, I actually didn't answer your question about junior giants, I apologize. So for junior giants, um, the, uh, registration opens in April, so it's going to be opening up pretty soon, and we do give them enough time because that starts in June, so that's plenty of time for them to apply. Currently, we are only offering it to Vacaville, um, residents, but last year we did open it up to Fairfield's and Vallejo.
Do you have a cap?
Yes, uh, this year it's going to be 120, uh, because we only use one field. Unfortunately, we're still only able to host junior giants for one day a week. Um, junior giants has expressed their interest in us being able to host it three days a week, um, but unfortunately, it's not doable for us at the moment, um, so we do only host it one day. Uh, I think last year we did it for two hours, um, so we do have to max it at 120 students for this year, just because we have one park and have to share three fields.
Is that because you don't have enough, um, enough volunteers or?
Two things, so mainly because unfortunately, we do not have enough volunteers and enough staffing to be able to supervise, um, each practice, and because, um, we, we probably haven't asked enough, but we have kind of struggled with being able to get more than one park, so we've, we're situated at one park, but because I think there's other contracts with other parks, we kind of get what is available, if that makes sense, but they're also really good in working with us and being able to allow us to use the parks. So does that make sense? Just, I think, um, conflicts with other sports that are going on in the city and then volunteers.
And my final question or comment, I'm happy to hear the work you're doing at Vacavilla. Um, they definitely need it, as you've learned, you've outgrown the space they've, um, provided to you, and hopefully we're, be able to work something out, because all the, all young people need it. They definitely need it.
Well, we agree.
And it's worth it.
Much.
So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, thank you guys for allowing us.
And I appreciate, um, I appreciate questions up here, and the reason is because I, I can understand this because I lived it for three decades, but there's a lot of understanding to know why is it where, and so I don't, I don't take offense to a good question because, because I'm sitting there going like, yes, please tell the why, because there was a period of time when, when PAL was not in the police department. Difference is, is it was in Parks and Rec. The reality is, is it had limiting factors of how to connect with the resources, it's at-risk base versus, you know, program subscription to a, a sport based. It, it overlaps, and I'm glad to see it being successful, and I always knew that that's where it needed to be. Requires access to all the different departments, and I'm glad that it's thriving. It does beg the question that I'll ask, that you're probably thinking is, um, Councilmember Wiley did bring up the point that it is not within the Travis Unified School District, it's part of our city. So it's a good question, why? Why doesn't it serve Vacaville residents? I know that they have, have their own programs, but how, you know, what's the bridge?
Well, PAL, PAL does, so students from Travis campus, it's just the clinical counseling is the one that doesn't, and that's just because we don't have a contract with, with Travis Unified. We only have a contract with Vacaville Unified.
Is, is there a possibility of exploring to expand the resources so that it's not a limiting factor just because you live, you know, in South Town, or?
Yeah, we, we used to, um, we had a higher number of, of mental health coordinators, clinicians, and so when someone retired, they weren't replaced. We have, you know, we'd have to hire new staff, we'd have to hire another mental health coordinator to do that.
It seems like we're leaving a piece of the city out.
Yeah.
And so maybe that's something to consider, not just space, but if for the resources for the community, where are we lacking, and maybe that's an area that we can consider, so.
They're being served by Fairfield's, its own PD.
They may be, but, but I know.
Oh, I understand.
From a youth services standpoint, it becomes very strange. I know how case management gets kicked to Fairfield, and yet you live in Vacaville, and the school is in Vacaville, and a lot of this doesn't make sense, it's just because we have the overlapping districts.
Right.
None of, it never made sense to me, but it is what it is. I just would like to make sure that we have the resources.
Oh, yeah, I hear you.
I'm going to open up to the, the public, anyone wishing to, to comment on this item? Of course not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few years ago, I started coming to the city council meetings because I was concerned about allowing the police department to do their, their job correctly without improper restrictions, et cetera, because we have an outstanding police department. It was one of the first things when I lateraled from Placer County, the Auburn area down here. Um, one comment, I know you weren't trying to take it out of it, but it's usually the first responder, EMS or police, who make that first contact with a child in crisis. And so the fact that Vacaville Police Department, with the support of the council, has developed such a program, it, it's, it's like nothing I've seen, and my stepbrother retired a cop, et cetera. But I'll harken back to an experience and why, why I think this is not just unique, but extremely, it's critical, it should be part of every police agency. It was 1977, I was a patrolman in a small town. My sergeant showed up, I was on day shift, and he said, "We have to go investigate." And what it was, was sexual assault on a four-year-old. Now, we couldn't make the case, we were very certain of it, the DA wouldn't take it. But you know, I had nothing I could offer that kid and, and the mother, but you do. Now, granted, 1977, things were different, but this is the kind of thing that touches my heart, and I'm so glad that you do it.
Thank you. Ain't no one else, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Councilmember Sil.
Um, just a quick request, I don't know when would be appropriate time, but, uh, I would like to learn more and see more about the diversion program, specifically how, uh, youth can get involved in it. Uh, we've seen different uptake of different issues, particularly since COVID and kids trying to find different ways to stay busy, and, uh, literally the destruction of our community, I don't want that. Um, a lot of folks my age don't want to see kids continue that pathway, um, and I'm very open to seeing how we can, uh, re- divert their energy, um, but it is kind of hard to compete with, uh, the other conflicting, uh, interests that's going on and preying on our kids, so, um, would like to learn more about that, and, um, uh, just from that perspective. I will say that, uh, the CMF, they have the POP.
POP.
Yeah, they have POP, um, so they're, they're routinely, like every one, one to two times a month, they bring out six to seven kids, uh, just for the public, it's not a scared-straight program, it's something where the, the kids get in, they get a chance to know, um, and realize the consequences to their actions and, uh, hopefully, um, encourage them to make, uh, more, uh, better decisions on their behalf and the others that their decisions impact, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Stockton.
I had more, just a comment, I just wanted to thank you ladies, um, for the work that you're doing. Um, I'm a huge advocate for breaking barriers for mental health and having access to resources that can change the lives of kids and families moving forward. Um, so thank you for helping break that stigma, thank you for helping establish relationships with kids and families and encouraging them to work with our police department so that we can better protect and serve our community. It, I just don't think you probably get told that enough, maybe you do, but I wanted you to know that you're very, very appreciated because it is a very difficult job. Um, you touched on the fact that it's a, the, the resources for mental health are, are desperately needy, needed. But I also feel like what you're doing right now in the lives of kids is inspiring the next generation to kind of fill some of those roles in, in addition to the law enforcement roles, so, um, I wanted to thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to offer a shameless plug for anybody that wants to support PAL, um, they're having a crab feed on March 9th. Put that in your calendars, March 9th, incredible organization that's making a huge impact on the lives of kids, families, and just our community in general, because our kids are the future of our community. So thank you for what you're doing, for working with our police department. I spent a, a, a very happy portion of my career in youth services, and so to see that this is available in Vacaville, um, and it was, has not been at some of the other agencies that I've worked with, really does make me feel good, like, and I think that that was mentioned before, um, to know that you have that help to offer when other things, um, kind of fall short or don't provide those opportunities, so, so thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and thank you for, for taking the time to inform us and the, and the community of, of all that you do, so really appreciate it and, and looking forward to, to hearing more, because this helps inform the council when it's, when, when there are policy decisions to be made, so, I appreciate it. And thank you, you all for supporting and for your, your authentic words, uh, the stories actually are very meaningful. All right, Mr. City Manager, um, I see that we're at, uh, reports of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I wanted to give the council enough, quick update on is, is that, um, the application period for vacancies on our Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission has closed. We ended up receiving 10 applications for the Parks and Rec Commission and seven applications for the Planning Commission. Staff is putting together that information, and we'll get that to the council this week so that you can begin your, uh, review of those applications, and then, uh, we will likely bring that, uh, item for the council's discussion and appointments at your second meeting in February.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, uh, reports of the City Council. Councilmember Stockton.
Just a couple of things, um, I know that Mrs. Dunn briefly mentioned, um, that the county unanimously approved a moratorium to give them more time to address energy storage or battery storage facilities in the county. Uh, I'm looking forward to having that conversation with, with council. I'm curious, City Manager, could you let us all know when we might expect to have that conversation?
So we're still exploring some of the details, uh, about that particular request, but our goal is to bring that back to you either the second meeting in February or potentially March.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, the next question I had, and I don't know if this is for the police department or for you, City Manager, is if there's been any update on the warming center?
Only that it's working, uh, well, and that, um, you know, we're using the triggers that the, the council established. Um, it's been a couple of weeks since it's last been open, thankfully, um, because the weather has, you know, not been as extreme, um, and, but everything that I've been told and, and observed is, is that, um, we are very actively engaged in, in working collaboratively with our partners and the faith-based community, as well as, um, the attendant who is there, um, watching, you know, during the entirety of time. Um, and our crew unit is actively out there, you know, making sure that it's not becoming a disturbance to the neighbors, and our Public Works Department is actively out there cleaning things up and keeping things in order. Um, and so, um, everything that I've seen and observed has been quite positive to this point.
Okay, and my other question is, I know that the warming center is an additional alternative that we have for, when it qualifies for the inclement weather, but do we still have openings at the, some of the hotels in town that we partner with, as well as with Shelter Inc., so that that way, even if it doesn't meet that criteria, we still have space to help folks so that they're not, you know, just out in the elements, even if it doesn't meet that criteria?
Yeah, those options are still currently available, and those are for folks that are seeking, you know, uh, different kinds of options available to them, but yeah, we still have availability.
Um, and then my, my last thing that I wanted to briefly go over, um, I'm seeing on social media, media, uh, a lot of stuff revolving around fentanyl and drug use and fentanyl right now, and I was so glad to hear in the last presentation them talk about Teen Intervene, they talked about, um, Aware, and some of the different things that we're doing for our youth. I'm just curious, what is our police department, um, doing regarding fentanyl and not only with our youth, but also in their response, um, out in the community to educate folks, to let them know, because it seems like this is an issue that has gone beyond all socioeconomic statuses, all races, I mean, everybody from the most wealthiest folks to our homeless population and everything in between. So I'm just curious, because I'm seeing a lot of that online, do we have a plan, do we have training available related to fentanyl use?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Ritchie, and, and members of the City Council. To generally answer your question, uh, is a big yes. Fentanyl frankly is, is terrifying. Uh, I recall, uh, a long, long time ago, when I worked in narcotics in about 2005, we didn't, no, nobody knew what fentanyl was, and I was involved in an investigation actually at, um, a pharmaceutical, uh, location, and the, the person that was taking the fentanyl actually closed a, a plastic bag that contained fentanyl, and just the microscopic amount of fentanyl that went into the air that he breathed in automatically put him in respiratory arrest, I mean, dropped him. And so thankfully, somebody came along, but that was 2005-ish, and for 10-plus years, nobody ever knew, heard about fentanyl or what it was, and then all of a sudden, it's hit the scene in a way that, uh, I don't think any, any of us expected, especially in law enforcement. So we, we do have, all of our officers are equipped with Narcan. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, they're using it a lot. We have, um, weekly, uh, we have calls of potential overdoses occurring that we respond to with, with Narcan, and, and I just kind of want to make a plug for, for Narcan, it's, it's available, this is kind of the state of affairs as we see it, it's available at CVS, at Walmart, it's available online. Uh, sadly, it's, it's used often because the, the fentanyl plague, that's what I'm going to call it, uh, and opiate, uh, in general, the opiate chemical dependency, um, crisis that we're in, is infecting Vacaville. It's, it's infecting. crisis that we're in is infecting Vacaville. It's, it's infecting, you know, all the cities around us. And I saw back in 2022, City San Francisco had 647 overdose deaths. And in 2023, that rose to 806. And that's more than two a day. And that's terrifying. Obviously, we're not San Francisco, but you know, we're affected by this, this plague called fentanyl. We do have our vice crimes unit, our crime impact team, they both work together. Anytime we have an overdose or an overdose death, our vice team is called out because we want to investigate if it was fentanyl or methamphetamine, whatever the drug was, that we want to do our best to try and track where that came from so that we can hold that person accountable. We've been successful in, in doing that in, in a few cases that are currently being litigated in, through the DA's office. But it's, it's something that, you know, we're, we're keeping, we're, we're doing our best to try and, you know, plug the, plug the gap. But unfortunately, fentanyl is just so widely available, it, it's difficult. But, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can. We're going to continue to, to be innovative and, and, you know, to give our, our staff the equipment, our citizens the equipment in order to, you know, better address the, the overdose epidemic frankly, because we've had way too many recently.
Thank you. Councilmember, actually, we're going to go to Vice Mayor Ritchie.
Thank you for everything you're doing, Chief. Sorry, my voice. Narcan, it's, that's, it's crazy. I, my, I actually, I went on to the base kind of nine months ago. I carry Narcan sprayer in my lunch bag, my car, my wife, all my, my, and all grandparents do, just in case we're around, we can help some kid out. It's crazy how fast it can happen. So that's, thanks for bringing that up. On a latter note, I wanted to really just kind of recap. We had an amazing fourth annual MLK celebration in the city. It was amazing. It was amazing. This majority of the chamber was here. Everyone, everyone, I felt, if you, if you weren't here, you knew you would want to be there. It was awesome. It was like a gigantic quilt. I mean, it was just a patchwork of people in the community that came out. It was a real expression of what Vacaville, what makes Vacaville great, the people come out for diversity. We've had a little bit of a couple of months of, felt like intention over a few items. And it was amazing to see that some people come together to celebrate something that's positive and celebrate a man that died for a cause to make sure everyone had the opportunity to live a certain way in this country. So it's just, it was a blessing and a beautiful thing to see just the energy of that crowd. And I just, just can't wait to see it continue. And I wish that spark of kind of that community and diversity, a spark of kind of love. I wish just in a day, just kind of people remember that feeling and continue that through the daily life. But it was a great event for Vacaville.
Thank you. Councilmember Sylvan?
Yeah, just wanted to think, I know Greg, you know, I was supporting that particular event. But the original founders, Aisha Gutierrez, who, who spoke up in the beginning, and actually, I didn't tell anybody this, but kind of caught her, her husband in the audience. Just, you know, just, just proud, proud of what regular folks can actually accomplish and create. And all those at Vacaville People's Forum, the Slaloon County Black Chamber of Commerce, they absolutely have really helped bring people throughout the county together. So I'll be really curious to see how this continues to develop over, over the future years. I have no doubts it's, it would not continue. I have no doubt that it's going to continue. So I'll be curious to see how, how that evolves. And just the concept of, of service to others, selfless service to others is something that I, I think like we're always challenging ourselves to embrace. And again, like, you know, we got a prime example of the future generation here, although you guys probably don't, you guys probably feel old, but you're not. But, you know, again, like you guys, again, show up left and right to, to whatever's going on as much as you can. I did want to come back to, to one comment that was made about my mom made me. Please thank, whatever, you know, a lot of times we butt heads with our parents and family, you know, and just those, if you ask, I feel like I'm old. So you have to ask us, old folks, you know, like looking back, I'm, I'm very grateful that somebody, whether, you know, despite, they may have in their own internal issues and whatnot, but they cared enough to make sure that we showed up at something that, you know, maybe they didn't know if it was going to be valued. Maybe they didn't know if it was going to be helpful, you know, and they themselves maybe don't know how to navigate the system. But they think that, hey, this is somebody that might be able to help me, help my kid. And so, you know, throughout your lives, I just encourage you to please consider, no matter what might be going on internally, just to, I appreciate that love that they extended out for you. And then continue to be in a position to pay it forward to, to others, either with your own family or with others you come across. So I just, you know, I, I also want to thank them as well for that. So switching kind of notes here, Brian, Brian here? Oh, he's sleeping. That's fine. That's fine. It was a bad joke. So maybe last year, I can't remember, a year or two ago, we approved funding for some machinery in order to print signs for streets. Because sometimes some people like to take signs. I never did that when I was a kid, but you know, some people did. I really didn't. So, got that, Chief. All right. So, but essentially, I reached out maybe a week ago or two, I forget. And so, but one of the, one of the things that was mentioned is that in order for us, traditionally for us to replace a street sign, which could take quite a while. So our ability to be responsive to our residents and, you know, pathway finding whatnot, you know, in that sense wasn't necessarily met. And so one of the, one of the arguments was, hey, we can use, if we have this funding, we'll be able to be more responsive to, to keeping up our city. And that was a prime example of, you know, just a resident had reached out, all they did was relay the, the message and they looked into it, confirmed and printed up and placed it up and, you know, it's done. So really want to appreciate you all for, for being so responsive in that sense. Even though small things may not seem, you know, I know there's a lot of big things going on, a lot of different concerns, but a lot of times just those small things make a difference. So I just want to make sure you guys know that. So, thank you all.
Councilmember Wiley?
I would just echo the thanks and the appreciation for that Martin Luther King Jr. Day. It was a really great event attended by a whole lot of people across the city. And everyone appreciated just the, the feeling of we can pull together and make things better for everyone. And it was great to hear how the police department and PAL worked together and, you know, to be better for everyone. And this past week or two weeks ago, it was the retirement for Reggie Hubbard from Parks and Rec. And it was wonderful to see all the other department heads there to say goodbye and to, so it's just important for everyone to be working cohesively. So I appreciate that in our city. And my frustration is with housing, which we, I just want to know how we can continue to try to streamline things. Because I know that's one thing since we've started streamlined permits or something. But if the, you know, the habitat for housing was approved in 22, but then we can't start infrastructure till 25. And did he say move people in in 28? Or did he say 26? I don't, I didn't know exactly. So just anything that we can do, and it's not a Vacaville problem, you know, it's, it's all over. But to hear, you know, the, the PAL talk about what's the problem that's facing families, it's a lack of affordable housing and how expensive rents are. So that's just a frustration and see how we can do everything we can to make that better. So, that's it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. Two things. I, this time last year, we were, we, we had received quite a bit of rain. This year, we've received quite a bit, but not as much at the same time as we did last year. I just want to say that I stopped on the bridge today. I wanted to look over the side and see what that water was doing. And it wasn't rushing at all, very low. I looked at the debris. And then I had an opportunity to look over, you know, Brian had mentioned the flaps, there were some that were missing. There was one that was sitting there in my face and it was closed. I said, you know, this is great. This is great. And I know we haven't had the end of the rain yet, but I just want to thank Brian and his people. I know we have a lot to do. And Brian is on top of it and I'm thankful for that. And the residents, I'm going to thank you on behalf of the residents that thus far, we are not flooding. And then this weekend, on Saturday, there were so many MLK, was it Monday? Monday? Monday.
Week of Monday, yeah.
I tell you, there were so many events taking place. However, on Saturday night, I was at U-Latex at the Performing Arts Center to see Step Africa. I thought I had seen that performance before, but I had seen another one, another production out of New York that had come to the area. I had not seen this one. They almost had a sellout. It was, you thought that the crowd at the MLK was very diverse. I mean, it was very representative of Vacaville and it just made me proud. It made me proud. And the other thing that was quite noticeable to me, you know, sometimes you're attending a, a performance, you say, ah, okay, I've had enough, it's time to go. I positioned myself near the back of the theater. And so I had a clear view of the entire facility. Two people got up during the performance and I said, oh, they, much energy for them. Evidently, they just went to the bathroom and came back. Can you believe that? Out of, and it was a, a full hour and a half, a 90-minute fast pace. It was wonderful. And so if you were able to attend, I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did. If you didn't, if they come back to the area, please go. Please go. It's well worth your time.
Thank you. Just want to report out, at the last Slaloon County Water, one of the significant votes was the 25, it's a 25-year renewal for the water that is supported from Lake Bariessa. And while there was robust discussion, just because the, the federal bureau was a little lacking in wanting to, to truly be able to have enough time to review things, not wanting to rush mistakes and errors. What it really means at the end of the day is, is the, the board voted to approve and to continue what we have. And we have something very special with Lake Bariessa, the rights to the water that provide the agricultural waters for, for growing crops, but for all of our cities. And it's unique because it doesn't fall under the waters of the United States. It's, it is something truly that when you talk about housing today, well, it's because we make good decisions. And hopefully 10 to 20 years from now, we look back and we say, we did it right. And, and it wasn't lost on me. And I appreciate staff stopping what you were doing because I, I wasn't able to be at Reggie's party to, to go because I was at the meeting. But I really needed some insight because nobody wants to make a mistake when you're talking about the security of, of water for Vacaville for the next 25 years. And so I want to, I want to thank Justin and, and I pulled you away from the party and Melinda and Andrea to, to really help. So Andrea as well. Because it's like, is this really where we need to be? Are there errors? And you can see that all the cities are making sure that we're not going to lose the rights to the water. And it's, it felt like an 11th hour decision, but at the end of the day, I just want to commend, you know, the, the work that staff has been doing behind the scenes and that you'll continue to do for language and future contracts that we have with, with Slaloon County Water. Identify that Vacaville is one of the agencies that has the rights to the water. Had we not signed it, the, the truth is, it would have required an act of Congress. It would have had to gone through a procedural that we would never want to risk losing what we have. And so we talked about, we, we never want to miss a date if we can avoid it. I can assure you on that day, I did not want to miss the opportunity of getting that right. And so it was just an example of staffs working behind the scenes. And sometimes as council, we don't always see it. But it feels good to feel good that your staff is, is working their very best. And so that night, I, I slept well knowing, but I know that I, it was, must have been like five o'clock and the meeting starting at, is 6:30. And I'm seeing an all hands on deck. I need to know what this means because it's a letter that came out of another city. And so you're on it and helped me feel informed. So thank you. But for the council, you don't realize it and know, for the vice mayor, you're stepping into where Vice Mayor Wiley from last year, we sit on some of these other boards that are very important for our future. And so that was just another example, sitting on, on the, the board for water. And then lastly, I just want to make a comment. Just, you're, you're in the audience still, but this would be for the public. Obviously couldn't discuss it from business from the floor. Make no mistake, staff is paying attention to what's going on with Flannery. The council is paying attention. Some of us like myself, I sit on the Slaloon Transportation Authority. I think for a minute that transportation is not an issue when it comes to what California forever could impact. Talking about energy resilience, everything that could, you know, imply the impact for Vacaville is a subject of discussion. Just because it's not on the news, don't think for a minute that my phone sometimes doesn't ring looking for a comment from the media. I just wasn't able, I literally was taking down the lights of my Christmas tree and I was on the roof and I didn't get it until after deadline. But I've, I've spoken to the media on this issue and I've made it very clear. And I have, I have met with Jan Schrammick and I have made it very clear. There is, there's, we have to see what it is as being proposed. And their, their first glance of, oh, take a look at this simply begs more questions to be answered. So I believe that it is important for a city such as Vacaville, all the cities and the county and all the interests to make sure that they're heard. And we saw a good example of that when we watched the whole process with Menard and the Enra for, you know, a grid scaled battery. It's truly understanding the importance and the implication of groups, could be people, could be groups, what is their interests? How it affects the base. And I just want to be very clear, anything that would impact the economic development of our community would, if, if there is a negative to that, we will be front and center of the table if it's impacting our water, front and center. If it's impacting the quality of life of our community or our agriculture, front and center. Respecting the right of a landowner that now has close to a fifth of, of the county, you can't deny that somebody has a fifth of the county. But that doesn't mean that simply making postures in the media is somehow going on record. There's other ways to, to handle these types of events. And I sit on the executive committee for, for the Travis Community Consortium. So there are people who make and have opportunities to ensure that what is needed to be discussed is discussed. And not simply making comments that are negative, that doesn't necessarily accomplish what it is, what our needs are. What we need to do is be calculated and say, this is what's important to Vacaville. This is what's important to our neighbors at Travis and Fairfield and, and the county. And make sure that everything is on the table to be understood before there is, obviously there's a ballot measure. That's their right to, to do what they're going to do. The, the importance is, is do we understand the implications of it? And, and yes, we're paying attention. And I can assure you, my, myself in particular, I'm paying attention. But I'm not just watching. There's opportunities to be able to bring up questions. What does it look like when you, when you talk about these things? There, there's so much, so many more questions. All it did when they, when they put out what they did is, is say, okay, now we have a place to have a conversation. Not an angry one, but an informed one. And that's where we're at. So with that, and that's not going away. It's being talked in our community. It's being talked on the far corners of, of this country. People are talking about it because it's, it's, it's an interesting, sensational conversation. Who does this? Shifted from could this be nefarious outside the country to now we know what it is. Shifted from could this be nefarious outside the country to now we know what it is, but do we really know what's behind it all? No, we don't. Just begs more questions right now. Again, thank you to staff for all that you've done. It's been, for us, it's been a year. So, look forward to seeing the commission, the applications. And I, that's all I have to share for now. Appreciate the updates and good night Vacaville.